And call the meeting to order for the zoning board of appeals. It's our regular meeting on Wednesday, April 28th, 2021. We have two things on the agenda, but before we do that, let's do roll call. Steven Antonio, I am here. Josh?
Present.
Joanne?
Present.
Mark?
Hello.
All right, so we have a quorum with us four. Hi, Dan and Jeff, good to see you. I'll be honest, BPAD, I don't know your name.
That's sorry, that's Brett Smith. It's just the name of my iPad and I obviously need to change that.
I will call you BPAD forever now.
Thank you, Stephen.
Joining our meeting. Amanda, thank you as well for joining us this evening. Our first application is application 21-05 of Brett Smith applicant. First National Trust owner for a variance of the Simsbury zoning regulations, section 3.5.1 to construct a 12 by 24 foot shed within the front yard at the property located at 6 Hamilton Lane. Brett, I assume you'll be presenting on your own behalf tonight, is that correct?
Uh, yes, yes.
Okay. Basically, can you just give us an overview of what you're looking to do? We've done the supporting material, but in your own words, if you could tell us, we'd appreciate it.
Uh, yes, um, because I am in a wheelchair, um, I don't have a good access to our backyard. Um, and our backyard is a little bit of a hill and a bit of a water issue back there. So again, it's just not a spot where a shed can go. So in order for me to have a, an accessible shed area for me to store equipment as well as stuff for the yard and for me to get in it, um, I have to place it just at that spot on the yard. One, it's right there with the driveway, so it allows me accessibility without having to shovel another path, like in the winter if something comes up with the snow. Um, and it also, you know, puts less construction on the yard. If say I would have to maybe push it to the side yard, which I'm not sure how that could really go with the zoning regulations, because I am within the 40 feet and the 50 feet. So I'm within the zoning regulations. It is just a, it's kind of an unfortunate technicality that is the front yard, because it's kind of on like the side yard, that's right where the kind of breaks to the front yard. So it's not like it's necessarily right there in the front yard. But um, its main purpose is for me, for uh, me being able to get at it with uh, me being in the wheelchair, primarily for accessibility reasons.
Understood. So as I see it, just to sort of carve it out and have you uh, remind me if I am reading something wrong, but if we pushed it to the north on the opposite side of the house, we would impede the well, is that correct?
Yes.
Saying that, I'm pointing out that we can't put it anywhere else. Obviously, your septic and leach field is to the west, so it could not be shifted in that direction. And the house would block it from the other directions, so I understand the hardship. Does anyone else have any questions for BPAD before, sorry?
No, no, it's, it's my fault, please.
Does anyone else have any questions for Brett while we are in um, open discussion?
Not really. It's.
Seems pretty straightforward.
Seems very straightforward, it's um.
Josh, is there any?
Matter of, perhaps just a simple matter of safety, if nothing else.
Well, I think the hardship is um, I think it's actually described.
Yeah, have a wheelchair accessible.
The grade, that's what I was looking for.
Grade, that's what I mean, it's just a, just. Um. It, it has to be in a flat space, it has to be near the driveway in order for it to be useful. Um, and he's. Seems like he's picked the place that suits those two criteria.
Yeah, I don't see any other place. Um, okay, so with that being said, I think we're going to move forward. Brett, is there anything else you want to add before when we close the application, then we deliberate amongst ourselves? But to be frank, you're not allowed to talk. So is there any other information you think we might want to consider before we do so?
Uh, no, that's it, that's it, thank you.
All right, cool. Laura, I have a technical question. Hi, Ram, how you doing?
I'm doing good, how are you? How are you?
Ram is obviously a voting member, so how do we add him even though I've already done roll call? Is there?
We can just add him to the, did you hear the public hearing in its entirety? I think you joined right in the beginning of, right after you were done with roll call. So you can just go ahead and add him to the meeting.
All right, so duly noted and duly added. With that, we'll close application. Sorry, I lost track of it, 21-05 for deliberation. Joanne, you had some words to discuss earlier, so would you mind reiterating the hardship you see?
Yeah, I'm looking at the um, hardship and the staff comment, and he's seeking to have a wheelchair accessible shed placed adjacent to the driveway for wheelchair storage adaptive equipment. He has an uneven grade, the backyard is not a useful spot, the well is taking up the other side of the yard. And um, in order for this to be a useful shed, and obviously he needs the, he needs to be able to access it safely from his driveway. He's not asking for a variance in regard to setback, which is very helpful to us, it's simply that it's in the front yard.
Yeah, they're huge setbacks too, just to acknowledge it.
Right, it's way off the road, I mean, it's, he's not asking for that at all, because you know, he could ask to put it near the end of the driveway and make it a bigger issue. So I think that um, he's picked a spot that is, is the least um, questionable.
The most feasible, maybe.
Yeah, most feasible.
Anyone else would deliberate, does anyone have any questions as far as, you know, the hardship? I mean, it's blatantly obvious for me unless I'm missing something.
Yeah, very obvious. I was just curious if, it doesn't say in there if the neighbors said anything, just out of curiosity.
No comment from the neighbors, um, either for or against, they did receive the butters notices, um, so.
So they had their opportunity.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't believe we have anyone from the public here tonight to speak on any behalf either, so.
I don't know who Amanda is, but I'll be honest, because I closed the meeting, albeit maybe prematurely, we can't.
She's the clerk, so you're fine.
I'm sorry about that, that was an oversight on my behalf. Um, with that being said, I think we're all pretty much in agreement. Would someone like to make a motion and of course include the hardship?
Yeah.
And any limitations to our variance within the motion?
I can do it. Um, I'd like to make a motion to approve application 21-05 of Brett Smith applicant. First National Trust owner for a variance of the Simsbury zoning regulations, section 3.5.1 to construct 12 foot by 24 foot shed within the front yard at the property located at 6 Hamilton Lane. Assessors map F-18, block 201 and lot 007, zoned R-40. Uh, hardship being that he is seeking to have a wheelchair accessible shed placed adjacent to the driveway for wheelchair storage adaptive equipment. And due to the use of the wheelchair and the downhill grade of the backyard and the uneven terrain of his yard, placing the shed in the backyard is not feasible for him.
The internet, I don't know if you are?
Also, um, just to add to that, the, the condition would be that the accessory structure needs to conform to the building setbacks for the zoning district and the administrative zoning permit and building permits should be obtained in order to um, follow through on this.
Sounds great, who would like to second that motion?
I'll second that.
All right, Mark, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, against, abstain, so it's unanimous. Thank you very much Brett, we wish you luck with your garage and thank you for taking the time and effort to come before us.
Absolutely, thank you all very much for this, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi BPAD.
Yes, it'll be nice when I see you all in person.
All right, so moving along to application 21-06 from the town of Simsbury for a variance to the Simsbury Center code, section 6.5.4B to permit two of the light fixtures at a height of 30 feet at distances of approximately 46 and 48 feet from Town Hall at the properties located at 933 and 939 Hop Meadow Street. Um, Jeff, will you be presenting or?
Jeff had actually just given me a phone call telling me he's having some internet issues. So I'll, I'll give it a go and if he, he's able to connect or, or whatever, he'll, he'll join on in and try to give some input.
No worries. So uh, go ahead, give us an oversight, because honestly, there was a lot of literature.
Yeah.
But i- it took me a while to drill down and find the little red dots of where the, where the light poles actually are.
Yeah, it's, it's a busy plan, uh, it's a photometrics plan. So all those dark black lines are just showing the, the level of lighting throughout the site. Um, but the two red circles to the north side of the Town Hall are the ones in question there. Um, like you said, 48 feet and 46 feet from the building. Um, and Town Hall is a protected building for the, the center code. So again, like you said, any, any lights uh, that are within 50 feet can't be greater than the, I believe it was uh, 15 feet. Um, or third, uh, yeah. So we do have those lights both in the island within the uh, parking lot, which we're proposing to, to uh, re- reconstruct. So the islands are shifting a little bit farther away, um, but we do want to keep the lights within the islands to protect the lights from any possible vehicular damage. And it, it helps with the, the snow removal through the winter months. Um, so the plazas don't have to sit there and dilly-dally around each light pole. So we believe that's the hardship we have there. Um, and these are the only two lights on site that are within the 50 feet that are of this height.
So on the site, just for further clarification, there are no other lights at 30 feet tall or there's no lights?
There are two more lights that are above uh, that are 30 feet tall, but they're not within the 50 feet to the building.
So the variance is only two feet for one of them and seven feet for another one?
Oh, two feet for one and four feet for the other.
All right, so, but are the islands getting completely removed and put back in?
They're just, they're just getting shifted over a little bit. Um, they're pretty, they're pretty much in the same spot. If you zoom in carefully, you could see the line work for the existing and the line work for the proposed.
Yeah.
Um, it might be better to see on the layout plan that I had forwarded along, which is titled LA1 in the bottom right hand corner. I believe the lights are shown on there Laura, if you had provided those to the board members.
I had a self five.
Give Laura, you're gonna have to give Laura a minute, I guess Zoom crashed on her, she's calling in right now.
Okay.
That's why I'm trying to be the secondary backup.
Sure, but does that make sense Steve, the, the LA1 plan?
Yeah, no, totally, and she did forward that to us, so we do have it in our packet.
Okay, so you could see on there, it's a little clearer, the, the existing sort of faded back and the proposed uh, island is a little darker in color.
Right, no, and you can see where it's actually bumped out.
Yeah.
What is the minimal width of a travel lane? I see you've got 24 feet on the right as I look at the plans and 26 feet on the left.
Right, so, so typical for this parking lot would be about 12 feet. But we do have 26 feet along the um, building side, because we do have vehicles that come in for service and park there, um, and larger vehicles that have to turn. So we've done some turning radius, radii, um, and that's sort of what's needed for vehicles to make that turn in there.
Right, the, the fire trucks too, not to say.
Yeah, exactly.
But what, let me, let me phrase it differently. What prohibits you from shifting the whole grid of the parking spots two feet to the right to bring it into compliance and have a 22 foot width on the right and a 28 foot on the left, which would give you more for the active driveway, more clearance over there? Is there a, a reason that that can't be approached in that manner?
22 feet for, for a, a two-way lane width is, is getting pretty tight in there. And with the vehicles that are going to be coming in through that side, um, because they have to turn toward Town Hall, they'll probably come in from the new entrance that's on the very northeast corner of the site. And they'll probably be wrapping around the parking lot is our idea, um, through that, what is currently 24 feet. So shrinking that, they might not be able to make that turn, whereas currently they can.
I gotta be honest with you, Dan, I totally missed that you guys shifted the entrance. So shame on me for not even.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Rolling down on.
Entrance, yep.
On the uh, plans, did everyone notice that it's not the same entrance?
Yeah, it's just pushed, it's pushed down, right? It's like.
Yeah, it's pushed off to the right, which is.
Yeah.
Joanne, you're talking, but you're on mute, just so you know. You're still on mute. So are you MFing me or something?
So I had nothing meaningful to say, so that's okay.
Okay.
And then on, on the other side, it'll still spit out, right? I think that's the other side of the uh, I, I think there's a police, like the police entrance on the other side?
Yep, yeah, that entrance is to remain, it's going to be reconstructed, but it's basically in the same spot, yep.
Is it the same size?
Um, I believe, I believe we expanded it just a touch.
Okay.
Right, yeah.
Okay, so Laura, can you, I'm sorry. Tom or Laura, whoever, are we doing a variance for the 30 feet as well as far as the height? Just, just to make sure we're dialing it in, or Dan, if you know, I, just if you can answer quickly.
Um, so where, the 30 feet, so she put in the, the fixture height uh, section B there that says lighting fixtures cannot exceed 30 feet height above parking areas, which we're not exceeding 30 feet, it's exactly 30, 30 feet height. We're not requesting a variance to any of that, we're only requesting a variance to a fixture of 30 feet within 50 feet of the building.
I named it fauxie, phone week.
I hear some, some noises.
Yeah, I think Tom, Tom, you gotta hit mute.
Tom, you might want to mute.
Sorry.
Talking about Star Wars.
Was Darth Vader though, hold on, let's go back to Tom.
Talking about Star Wars.
Do that make sense though?
It does make sense. Um, you know, I'm just trying to see the hardship if you're ripping up the whole parking lot, to be honest. But I, I see it, you don't want to lose the parking spaces, do you need that many parking spaces as far as width?
So we are, we are really tight on parking spaces. Um, I believe there's a parking schedule out there um, on the left-hand side, which we're actually already losing spaces. We're losing five spaces to try to make up for this and that. Um, so losing another couple of spaces to shift these, these islands over is going to make it really e- even worse, even tighter.
No. The volume can't go up, right?
And we, we are trying to maintain that one foot candle of lighting throughout the entire site, um, which is another thing, that these lights kind of, kind of have to be this size in this location. You could see where, how far the, the lighting really sprays out over the site. Um, there's some spots where it probably wouldn't catch that one foot candle if it wasn't this height.
Is there anything under mute if you hit? Okay. And ju- just because we are exp- discussing a hardship, you, you want to maintain them being centered? I, like I said, Dan, I just have to ask every question that I can while we're in open.
Yeah, we need to keep them in the island there and even shifting them a, a foot or so over to the, to the north side of the island isn't going to get us away from this variance here.
Okay.
And, and moving them out of the islands, uh, like I said, it, we're just trying to protect the light poles. We don't want them to, to be damaged throughout traffic flowing through.
Okay, who else has some questions um, a- as far as the variance? Josh, how you doing? I'll do it in order of my screen.
Um, I think we're looking good. I think that um, you know, we're, we're trying to require, you know, a minimum light level for safety and that this is the safest place to put them where it's not going to be disturbing traffic.
Um, which, just out of curiosity, Dan, what is the height of the lamp pole that it's replacing?
Um, there is, I don't think there's currently a pole right there. Um, had it, hmm, I'm trying to see if there's a label for it. I don't know the exact height of what it's, it, because nothing's in that exact spot. Uh, it's, it's a new location for a light. So I guess that's the answer to your question.
It is actually, to be quite frank.
And, and all the other lamps are 15 feet height?
I believe tw- uh, 12 if I'm not mistaken, yep, 12 feet in height.
Okay.
The um, the lamp, bear with me, I'm trying to find the physical lamp just to keep this going. Uh, seems to be a little industrial, is it because it's a high energy versus the um, right now we have those globe lamps there if I'm not mistaken?
Right, it is an LED lamp, so obviously it's a pretty, pretty strong LEDs are. And in order to get that, that light level across the parking lot, it sort of has to be facing down like that. Uh, like the decorative lamps that we have out there currently, you could see the, the light levels that they give off and it doesn't go very far out. So we do need a, a light looking like that in order to get the spread.
Okay, and we're talking about just one side, right? Because, or are you talking about a dual light? It, it just shows a one-sided light and.
Yeah, it's just pointing north from, from the island to sort, sort of capture that parking lot and the parking spaces.
So what is illuminating the driveway, if you will, the throughway?
Uh, the one just adjacent to the, the building or the one farther north?
Okay, so there is one on the building shining down?
There's, there's a handful of um, we're retrofitting a couple of lights along, alongside the building there, as well as those two baller lights that we have right at the entrance. Um, so those are sort of getting that, uh, that, that driving space right next to the building.
Okay, and as an anecdotal question, um, are you going with like a bronze tone with these? Or are you thinking silver, where are you going as far as the actual light pole?
Um. Let me double check what we had selected, um.
Well, my follow-up question is going to be, what are the other poles that are going to be remaining as far as bronze versus um, or black or what have you?
A lot of the ones that are remaining are those black decorative poles which you see throughout town. A lot of the ones throughout town are green, but they're the ones that are currently on site and some new ones going in are going to be black.
So you're going to stick with your, your color plan, right?
Yeah, exactly, yep.
Okay. All right, so Josh, sorry to have cut you off. Joanne, do you have any questions for Dan, please?
I don't think I do, I think you've asked some.
Mark?
I was gonna ask about the, the light color and everything, but, but you beat me to it, so I think, yeah, well. Uh, no, I think I'm good, I, I get it. I think the movement of the entrance could uh, could be good actually. And yeah, I, I don't have anything else.
Ram?
No, me neither. I think the hardship is, you know, it, it's an abstract, the snow li- snow removal also, in addition to, you know, reducing the number, um, parking space, right?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, uh, with that being said, and us having gone through everything, is there anyone from the public that would like to discuss anything while we are in open discussion manner? Please unmute yourself and let us know what your query might be and we will definitely seek the answer. For any consideration, whether you'd like to express yourself in favor or against this and why, we'd be very interested.
I would just like to say Jan Lintner at 22 Masako, and we were late getting in to the discussion, so I'm not sure where the light is in relation to everything. Um, but because we do live across the street from Masako, uh, from Central School on Masako, the light packs that are on the school come straight into our house. So I'm not sure that I personally think that our control over lighting is the best that it could be. So I am concerned about where this high pole is in relation to the neighborhoods.
Okay, Dan, if you want to.
And I, I agree, I came in late, I'm sorry.
You, you're, you're here before the finish line, so it doesn't really matter. You, um, are you familiar with Town Hall?
Yes.
So you know when you pull in and there's the handicap spots, do you know where the handicap spots are?
Yeah.
So there's two islands between the handicap spot and the building. Um, there's two islands, there is a light pole in each island that will be put there. The lamps are downward facing lamps, they're not sideways lit, so it does create some control over any spill over light. I appreciate what you're saying though, and it stinks, and I wish that was before us, but we can't do anything about Central tonight.
Yeah, no, appreciate that.
Dan, is there any way she would see these from her house up by Central?
The light definitely would not spill out in that direction for our photometrics plan. You could see there's point one foot candle right at the property, at our property line, um, which is, is minimal, that's nowhere near uh, typical standards for a parking lot or a sidewalk. Um, we're trying to meet at least one foot candle everywhere. Um, and then it fades off pretty dramatically as you get toward the property. And you said, I believe you're on the other side of Masako Street, so you'll, based on our lighting plan, I don't, I don't see any light getting anywhere near you.
Right.
Does that answer your question though? I don't want to, you know, not address anything.
No, it's just, it, it, yes, it does address the question and, and my feeling is the lights on uh, Central go on all night, so there is no downside. That was my concern.
Complications like that. Okay, so that wouldn't be in our purview today, but you are most certainly welcome to contact the town. Um, because sometimes things can be altered, sometimes it just takes someone to say, hey, look at this. So I, I'm not sure, Laura, who would we suggest she contact? Or Tom, whoever wants to field that?
I'm sorry, my, my video isn't working each time I turn it on, but I can hear you and I am here. Um, you can actually contact the uh, either Tom directly or Mike Litten for that. It will probably be a zoning application for the site plan in which that would be discussed.
Yep.
So that would be before the zoning commission and not necessarily before the zoning board of appeals.
Understand, thank you.
Both of those people are in our zoning and planning department, so you can just dial the, the number for zoning.
Yes. Yes.
All right, cool, well, thank you for your input and being here tonight. Does anyone else have any questions as far as public comments? Last call for that. All right, I think we've pretty much gone over it. And I seem to be reading the commission uh, is leaning favorably. So would someone like to make a motion and of course try and include, not try to, you have to include the hardship as well as what we are giving for a variance. So would someone like to rise to that task?
I can do it if you want.
You know what, Joanne, I screwed up, I'm sorry, I mean, I messed up.
Oh, we have to do our, we have to close it first. Yeah, you gotta close it first, yeah.
All right, so with that being said, I'd like to close the application.
Right.
And now we can deliberate amongst ourselves, I totally jumped the gun, so let's just go through everyone. Joanne, is there anything additional you'd like to discuss?
Um, I am going to say that um, having adequate lighting there is important. I go in and out of that building at night for meetings and such. Um, a lot of people do when we're not in, doing all Zoom meetings. Um, so I get that they need to be the bigger brighter lights than the, than the uh, you know, colonial looking little lampposts that we have all over town, which I love. But this is a. But this is a calls for a little more light. Um, and if you've already lost parking places, uh, you know, a two foot, four foot variance to not lose more might be a reasonable compromise.
Okay. Mark, you got anything? What'd you like to discuss?
Uh, I don't have anything further. But I can make motion if you want.
Well, let's just ask Ram first if he has any input, please.
Um, no, I I don't have anything. I, you know, we, he answered all our questions and concerns. I was about to ask about that, you know, I forgot to ask, like, you know, if the light goes, you know, uh, further onto the other streets, but you know, uh, someone from public asked, so that's a good one. Um, I'm good. Thanks, Stephen.
All right, and Josh, do you have anything?
I have nothing further to add.
All right, so Mark, if you'd like to make a motion, of course, include what the variance is and what the hardship is, please.
Sure, so I moved to, uh, approve application number twenty one dash oh six of town of Simsbury for a variance to Simsbury Center code, section six point five point four B to permit two light fixtures at a height of thirty feet at distances of approximately forty six and forty eight feet from Town Hall at the properties located at nine thirty three and nine thirty nine Hop Meadow Street, assessors map H zero nine block two zero two and lots zero zero one and zero zero two zone SCZ. And do I go into the description of variance or just the hardship, Steve?
Well, you you described the variance within that paragraph, but now you have to say what the hardship is.
Okay, so within the narrative provided with the application materials, the specific hardship is described as the proposed lighting plan meets industry standard light levels and distribution while maintaining the greatest distance from Town Hall to protect the established fabric and character of Town Center. An alternative to the submitted plan would require light fixtures to be located within the main parking field outside of the parking lot islands. This alternative creates a less protected location and impacts snow removal operations during winter months.
All right, would someone like to second it? All right, Ram has seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstain, it's unanimous, it passes. Dan, thank you very much. Excellent job tonight.
Thank you for your consideration. Thank you for your time as well.
What's up with Jeff checking out, though?
Uh, he's having some issues with his computer. He must have just taken off.
It's fine. You did great, and we appreciate you taking the time to be here tonight. Thank you.
Yeah, you guys too. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too.
Good night.
All right, so moving right along, approval of minutes from March twenty fourth. I did find one typo, but I will defer to the educator amongst us.
You do know I'm an art teacher, so.
It's still education.
I still do correct their spelling and grammar, so. Um, I saw something on line ninety, the word imperious? I don't think it's supposed to be imperious.
Impervious.
Impervious. And then on ninety four, I don't remember. Wait, let me look. Oh, no, that one's okay. I thought it read weird, but it's okay. Did you see something else, Stephen?
Yeah, to be quite frank, I'm not sure what the answer is either. On line thirty and thirty one, to draw your eye back to there, there's the verbiage is fine. It's a little screwy, but it refers to the west twice and the east never. So either the residences are to the east and south of the, um, proposed structure. I think they are to the east and the south. Now, in hindsight, it would be to the west and the south. Because the road would be to the east.
It says west and south and north and west. So should it say north and east and west and south?
Hold on. It should say this property is bounded to the north and west by open space. But it can't be south of the west of two existing residences. Oh, you know why? I just figured it out in my head. It's because it's an L shaped property.
Yeah.
So one part of the property is a budding open space and the other one is a budding, um, a residential home.
Yeah, yeah.
So ironically, I am so sorry to, uh, to have gone through all of that.
So it's fine.
Yeah, there's one other one, a number line thirty seven. We should just designate that the verbiage towards the end of it should be parking lot and not lot because a lot could obviously be a property lot.
Oh, you're right, yeah.
Small, small thing. So with that being said, uh, would someone like to make a motion as far as approving these minutes?
Uh, I make a motion to approve the minutes of March twenty fourth, twenty twenty one as corrected.
And would someone like to second them?
I'll second.
And all those in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed, abstain, it's unanimous. We have approved our minutes. There is one final motion for the night unless there's any open business anyone wants to discuss before we do that. A whole lot of no. So who wants to make that final motion? Which is the motion to adjourn, just to be fully clear.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Josh, thank you. Who would like to second that motion?
I can second that.
All right, thank you, Ram. All those in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed, abstain, it's unanimous. We are.